You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 4th, 2020 City Commission Meeting. We will start by approving the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Are there any changes requested by the commissioners?
Nope.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Finkeldie, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will move on then to our consent agenda. Please note that all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Are there any items that commissioners would like to pull from the consent agenda?
No.
B seven B?
B seven B?
B seven B.
Are there any items that a member of the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda except for item B seven B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Larson, second by Vice Mayor Finkeldie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Item B seven B.
Okay, these are the bylaws for the Special Alcohol Funding Advisory Board, and I'm concerned that the provisions of Article 10 don't conform to the provisions of Resolution, I think it's 7224, that provides our advisory board overview. So I think it's important that these bylaws conform to that unless there's a good reason not to.
Are you talking about Section 2 of Article 10?
It would be the fact that if they're revised, under 7224, the revisions have to come back to City Commission.
Correct.
But that's not the provisions of Article 10.
Correct.
Are there any comments from staff on why that isn't reflected?
Danielle Buschkutter, I'm one of the staff liaisons to this particular board. We can certainly go back and look at that in more detail. Our bylaws are relatively templated for the different advisory boards, so we can go back and have that conversation specifically with legal and the advisory board at their next meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Any other commission questions on that?
Do we need to have a motion on that?
We need to have a public comment first. Any public comment? Okay, now we can have a motion.
I move to return the bylaws to the Special Alcohol Funding Advisory Board for their consideration of Resolution 7224.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bulleye, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment, the public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or regular agenda portions of the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the item to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. Any general public comment?
I live at 627 North 750 Road, Lawrence, Kansas. Today is February 4th, 2020. The city has a rogue cop that is in a jam. The police made it worse by not solving this problem in July of 2019 after I filed a complaint. You made it worse with a lie covering it up and enabling him by not doing the investigation you sat there and promised me to do. You make it worse as now it turns into a court case by your violations of the Kansas statute as amended 45-25 through 45-23, specifically 45-218, paragraph D, that requires a response within three days of the Kansas Open Record Act request that was delivered to you on the 29th of January 2020. As I said, today is the 4th of February. When the truth does come out, it'll probably be in the news along with the cop that shot himself, or the taser and pistol mix-up, or the financial problems, or the judgmental problems by the city and the police department. You're making matters worse with your errors when this matter could have been solved months ago with plain and simple honesty. This is not the Lawrence the public wants, and your actions do not represent me and hopefully the honesty of the public that you're supposed to represent. Who do you represent? And why are these bad choices being made? It is not too late for simple honesty. The simple honesty you expect from your spouse, your children, your friends, your coworkers, and what we want from you? A lie is a lie is a lie is a lie, and I think you've heard me say that many times over the past few months when I've been up here talking about this matter. There is a problem here. You have the solution. The conversation you don't want to have is the one you must have.
Other general public comment?
So I have another ordinance I think it's time for the city to take another look at. The ordinance that limits religious organizations operating temporary shelters to no more than 15 guests. Let's increase that number. On Sunday mornings, we let churches fill their buildings with worshippers. With 30 homeless people take up as much parking in a neighborhood as 50 or more church-going families, would the noise coming from the building as 40 homeless people slept be any worse than the noise of a church organ playing along with 100 or so worshippers singing? I think a church's Sunday service would be more of a hassle for a neighborhood to deal with than an overnight shelter. Yet it's the shelter a neighborhood would be more likely to fight because people don't want the homeless in their neighborhoods. Limiting the number of shelter guests to just 15 goes right along with the NIMBY's desire to keep the homeless out of their neighborhoods. I say, before a church is limited to just 15 for an overnight shelter, it should be proven that any more than that will actually cause problems. Foot traffic is not a valid problem in my book. Just because, over the course of an evening, 30 to 50 people walk through a neighborhood doesn't mean that they are a noise disturbance. If a church can have a shelter with 50 guests but none cause noise disturbances, then a shelter should be allowed to have that many. So in closing, I say, increase the number of guests allowed at temporary shelters, and maybe decrease that number on a case-by-case basis if it can be proven that the number of homeless is causing problems. Thank you.
So I'm in a request in general public comment that we reduce our audible responses unless you're making public comment. I think that will make people feel more welcome and safer as they're giving public comment in our audience. So that will be something that I will be regularly reiterating throughout public comment. Thank you. Any other general public comment?
Good evening, my name is Katie Walsh, 732 Rhode Island, and I just have a comment on the overturning of the Historic Resources Commission decision for the inappropriate addition to the house on Pennsylvania Street last week that is in the environs, or environs are the context of three properties on our local historic register. I don't know if you know, but the National Vernacular Housing Annual Conference was held in Lawrence, Kansas not that long ago, and the main draw was East Lawrence. We have the largest remaining intact area of vernacular architecture, which is commonplace architecture built by the people who go get the stuff or find it in the dump or whatever, not architects and builders. We have the biggest area still left in the nation, and this is what we're trying to protect. The real estate lobbyists in Topeka and our governor Brownback, the same ones who passed that law saying developers don't have to set aside a portion of new construction for affordable housing, those same people pushed and Brownback passed the law to take away environs at the state level. They're not our friends. Let's see. Oh, and also, a member of the audience, and people who are feeling a little libertarian, said that people should have every right to do whatever they want with their property. But we have city codes, and I have to keep my electrical up to code. We all have to obey those city codes. The preservation law is part of our city code. And lastly, you can put solar panels on historic buildings, and you can go to the National Park Service Technical Preservation Services. There are 50 little educational pamphlets written for laypeople, and one of them is how to put solar panels on historic buildings. Thank you.
Thanks.
I propose that our city commissioners, municipal heads, developers, investors, and other city leaders bike to work and for errands for one week in winter, one week in spring, one week in summer, one week in the fall. I also propose that you take the bus for one week during all four seasons as well. I want you to prove that you biked or bussed at least once very early in the morning and once very late at night, and that you did your biking and bussing on at least one day of bad weather in all four seasons. If you have somewhere to be on a Sunday and it's your bus week, you'll be required to walk, just like your citizens do. In order to reduce our carbon output and not add to our lethally overdrawn greenhouse gas budget, we have to support free, widely available bussing, and we have to have citywide bike lanes that are real bike lanes, protected and reinforced, safe for the youngest and oldest bikers at any time, day or night, in any kind of weather. Painting a picture of a bike on a pitifully widened road is hardly adequate. Every time I've tried to use my bike for work or errands, I've almost been hit by a car, literally every time. Every time I've tried to use our bus system, I've lost hours out of my day. Our bus shelters look like something out of a third-world country when they should be ubiquitous and weatherproof, and if I need to use the bus on Sunday, I'm out of luck. It is one thing to sympathize with a difficult situation, it's another entirely to live it. If your first reaction to this challenge is irritation or dismay, that's a big clue that our public transportation policies are totally outdated, totally and completely inadequate for the needs of our town. One of my least favorite things in the world is being set up to fail and punished for failing. We can't ask our people to try to lower their carbon footprints if we don't give them the means to do it. The buses and bike lanes are failures of the city, not of the people of Lawrence. We deserve the kind of bike lanes and buses that are so well-designed that they're not just the greenest option, they're the easiest option. We are already struggling with road repair, parking issues, drunk driving, accessibility issues. This is a solution for those problems. You can't ask your citizens to do something that you yourself are unwilling to do. Undertaking this challenge will empower you as you trade temporary inconvenience for valuable clarity and insights that are required of our leaders during the climate crisis. Keep in mind that climate change is an effect amplifier. Snowy days will be snowier, rainy days will be rainier, hotter days will be hotter, storms of all kinds will be more frequent. You know I'm willing to get up here again and again even though public speaking is really hard for me. You also know that when I start work on something, I see it through. I just had this idea last week, I haven't even begun to organize public support for it, but you know I'm going to. I'll be reaching out to all the bike shops, all the environmental and outdoors groups, all the parents, students, professors, and media outlets I can find. This is a hard thing you guys have to do, I'm sorry to add to your workload, but you need to start thinking about how you're going to do this challenge over the next month.
Thank you.
Excuse me, next 12 months. I didn't cry and I hardly shook.
Good work. Other general public comment?
Caitlin McDermid, 1000 Mississippi, and I'm a resident of Lawrence for 14 years. I absolutely hate public speaking. I was raised to empathize and have compassion for all creatures of the natural world, Mother Earth, and my fellow humans. This was to be done regardless of circumstance, regardless of skin color or heritage, regardless of political or religious beliefs, regardless of class or opportunity or education level. I was raised to have gratitude for the roof of my head, the simple food on my plate, any gift bestowed upon me and my health and family members. I was raised to understand that these benefits I had were as a result of hard work, but also of circumstance. That all you had could be taken away, no matter your strength or willpower, and that there was a community obligation to serve in some way. I learned that through service, you help others, but even more than that, you help yourself. Being poor is not a crime. Being mentally ill isn't a crime. Being a victim of abuse is not a crime. Making our community members suffer in freezing temperatures is a crime. Not providing the basic services of shelter and food to all of our community members is a crime. Turning a blind eye to an ongoing issue in our community is a crime. I hope going forward that the commissioners repeal the ordinances which will make it illegal to be houseless. We can't have people not be allowed to camp if we can't provide them shelter. I hope we all work hard toward a comprehensive, multiple-agency, fully-funded, long-term plan to make sure that in both the bitter cold of winter and the oppressive heat of summer, that we serve all our community members in providing appropriate safe shelter and basic life-giving resources.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Bonnie Lowe. I'm the president and CEO of the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to say thank you. You will be facing some incredibly hard decisions in the coming months with your budget strategic planning session, and I wish you the best. We have five wonderful people here to represent our community, and I for one thank you. Your heart is in the right place, you do the right thing, and you should be commended for putting yourself out there. That's not an easy thing to do. I sympathize with people who aren't comfortable in speaking in front of people. I appreciate them doing so, and I know you do as well. Being in those five seats and being the administrators is not easy as well. We appreciate our collaborative and trusting relationship and open dialogue that the business community and the chamber has with you all, and there is an element of trust, and I want to see that continue with the community. I also wanted to briefly touch on recent news about the distribution center that closed in our community. I want to ensure you and the public that we will do everything in terms of the Chamber of Economic Development to ensure the affected workplace individuals will be well taken care of. The Workforce Development Center is also, has programs in working with these individuals, and our hearts go out to those who are affected by the loss of their jobs. So thank you for all you do, you're doing a great job. We should never question your motives and your hearts because you're doing the right thing for our community. Thank you.
Any other general public comment?
Hi, my name is Carolyn Kane. I live at 2030 Vermont Street, and I am asking you to consider removing the limit on temporary shelters in churches and religious communities during especially the winter months, but also any other months, right? If things get really bad in the summer, I'm asking you to remove the limit to 15 people or to increase it to 35 people. We need to help people be inside during these months at night. People can get frostbite really quickly, and so this is a matter of life and death for a lot of people. And I also ask that you remove the ordinances that make it illegal for people to camp. I don't think we should be criminalizing homelessness or poverty. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right, thank you for your comments this evening. We will now move on to our regular agenda. Oh, I did want to mention, we will be talking about two of those ordinances at our next meeting that were mentioned by several public commenters in our study session. Our first regular agenda item is to receive an update regarding public engagement plan for the strategic plan.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Danielle Buschkutter, the Budget and Strategic Initiatives Administrator for the city, and I'm really excited to talk to you about the strategic planning process. I think we've been alluding to it for a while now, so it's exciting that it's finally here and in front of us, and we can really start making progress on this. So I'm going to pull up a brief presentation so we can kind of walk through what the public engagement plan that we have put together looks like, get any feedback from you all, and talk a little bit about the process that we went through this last time. So I know several of you were not involved in that, so I think it'd be good to kind of take that step back and talk about what we didn't and what we hope to do with this upcoming plan. All right, so we'll start with the background. So our first strategic plan was adopted in March of 2017. This included seven critical success factors, which are our big goal areas, eight priority initiatives, which were more related to projects that we hope to get done in the next two to three years. And this was a really great first step in the city's strategic planning process. This was the first time we had really gone through a formal strategic planning process that really helped guide our budget decisions and policy decisions that the commission was making. In order to get that plan adopted, I've kind of at a very high level laid out what the process looked like, and it looked different than compared to what we are proposing this revised process looks like. So back at the end of 2016 and the beginning of 2017, there were two city commission retreats that were both facilitated by the Novak Consulting Group, who's doing our facilitation work again with this upcoming plan. They also facilitated an employee input session, they had two public meetings, and we had an online engagement. This process, we got a lot of really good feedback and information, but we did not get a lot of public engagement in those two meetings or that online engagement. So that was really the focus and one thing we wanted to improve on in this upcoming version of the strategic planning process that I think we learned and took away from this process. So I think this served as a really good foundation. I think we all learned a lot after going through that process, and I think you'll see some of those improvements in this upcoming plan. So at a very high level, I'll walk through the process. This was kind of laid out by the Novak Consulting Group, and then we'll really focus on that public engagement component of it. But we have started that project initiation, so we did have the Novak Consulting Group onsite, I think it was just last week, and they did a one-on-one with each of the city commissioners. They met with our project team as well as our executive team to kind of facilitate a discussion with them. And while they were here, they also trained over 40 staff members on how to facilitate small group meetings. So we counted 42 staff members at the physical training, but we also had a handful of others that are still interested in being a part of what we have started calling our Lawrence Listens Team. So this is really a way that we can get staff out into the community to collect as much information and hear from as many different people as we possibly can over the next month or so. Once that has been completed, so now we're going into that public engagement process, and this will last from now until March 7th, then we will, I say we, all of the information that's collected during that time will be sent to the Novak Consulting Group. They'll compile- Group. They'll compile everything and put together a summary report for you all prior to your big retreat that is scheduled for March 28th. After that retreat is has concluded, and we take and Novak takes the results of that, there will be a draft strategic plan and ultimately an adopted strategic plan. All right, so as I mentioned, the goal behind our public engagement plan is to hear from as many different people throughout this process and throughout our community as we possibly can. This was a big reason why we wanted to get staff within the city trained to do some of this outreach activity and engagement, so that we can really get out and hear from people who maybe don't come to city commissions every Tuesday, but but still should have a voice in this process. So I'm going to talk through kind of the two components of this public engagement plan. So the first are the activities that are going to be led by the Novak Consulting Group, and then we'll also talk about the activities that will be led by staff. So at a high level, the Novak Consulting Group will do three major components of this process. They will host community meetings, and so these are really the the meetings, the primary meetings that we're going to try to encourage people to attend and be a part of that discussion. Those will be relatively large, we hope, and will be at the Carnegie Building. They will also be hosting a meeting specifically for all our advisory board chairs, and we'll invite the vice chairs as well, and then a meeting with our partner governmental institutions. The staff-led activities, and we'll be going into each of these in more detail, but the staff-led activities will include four satellite meetings, and these will be in different parts of our community, a little bit smaller, led by staff. But in the event that people aren't able to attend one of those two large meetings, we wanted to give them an opportunity to attend one of these satellite meetings. We will also have an online survey, and like I mentioned, we have several staff members that are now trained to facilitate some of these small group meetings. And I want to I want to make sure and point out and emphasize that when facilitators go out and facilitate these meetings, they will collect the input and listen to that particular group and send all of that data directly to the Novak Consulting Group so that they can compile all of that and provide you all with summary and analysis on that All right, so let's focus on the different elements of the consultant-led activities. So first, like I mentioned, are the two community meetings. These are the big events that we really hope people will be able to attend and participate in. So they will be held Wednesday, February 26th at 6:00 p.m. at the Carnegie Building, and then Thursday, February 27th at 10:00 a.m., also at the Carnegie Building. You will notice you all had a stack of 10 golden tickets sitting in front of you, and this is really our way to try to encourage you all and ask you all to be active participants in this, and really try to encourage people that you think would be really beneficial to hear from during this process, and specifically ask them if you if you would give them the ticket and ask them to attend one of those two meetings. Now you have 10 in front of you. That doesn't mean you're limited to 10. We will also have one-pagers if you're interested and would like to give those out as well. But we think it's really important that that you guys, as you're out in the community, find those people that you think would really be valuable to hear from and personally encourage them to attend one of those two meetings. And if they don't want to do that, then there are other ways to participate as well, but we really want to make sure that we hear from as many people as we possibly can. And at these two meetings, so this will be a city-hosted meeting, and we see a lot of value in having one of you all attend one of those some of these meetings and do a bit of a welcome and thank people for participating in this process. And so we have you'll see this on several of the slides for the city-hosted meetings. I think you guys can play a really important role in that and really welcoming people into participating and thanking them for their their time. All right, so now the two advisory board chair meetings. Again, this will be a city-hosted meeting. We would love to have one of you kind of give a welcome to those who are able to attend that. But we really wanted to have a meeting dedicated to all of the different advisory boards that we have. Now, we can't invite all seven, 10, 13 members of all of our nearly 40 boards, but we wanted to invite the chairs and vice chairs to come to a facilitated meeting with our consultants so that they can talk about how what they see in Lawrence, what they really enjoy, and what what their kind of vision would be and their perspective. So because that's a relatively large group, we anticipate this being all of our advisory boards and committees, even our joint boards and the boards we make city appointees to. So when you look at our advisory board landing pages, it's pretty much all of those except for the the steering committees because those are temporary in nature. And then there will be one governmental institution meeting. So this will be, again, a meeting facilitated by our consultants that where we're able to invite our partner agencies, if you will, in the community. So this would get the county in the room, hopefully, and both of the universities here and and the hospital and some of those other governmental entities in our community so that they can also talk about the vision that they see for Lawrence moving forward.
Would that include the school board as well?
Yes, both of them. So we'll do both the Lawrence and the Perry-Lacombton School District.
Cool.
Yes, thank you. All right, so now we'll talk about the staff. So that was the consultant side of the process. Now we'll talk about the staff side of the process. So we have four what we're calling satellite meetings that we have set up, and these will be led by city staff members and facilitated by city staff members. And we tried to get into different times of the day, different parts of our community, and this is really meant to help supplement the community meetings that will be led by the Novak Consulting Group. And again, it would be really great if you guys are able to attend one of these and give a welcome. Then we will also have an online survey. So this was the tool that I think was utilized the most during the last strategic planning process, and it's something that we wanted to make sure was open and available again. So this survey will have six open-ended questions, and they will be very similar to the same types of questions that will be asked at both the satellite meetings and the large community meetings. So if people aren't able to attend either of those but still would really like to participate, this is a great avenue and something that we really hope gets a lot of traction, and a lot of people take the opportunity and the time to to fill out these six high-level questions about what the city does well, what what improvements can be made, and I think that'll be a really good tool for us to utilize. And that will be open, it's open now, and it'll be open through March 7th. All right, the facilitated small group meetings. So as I mentioned, we had an amazing turnout for people who are interested in being a part of this Lawrence Listens Team, and I think it's pretty phenomenal to see people from every department in our organization interested in the strategic planning process and getting out and collecting feedback and listening to folks that they interact with on a regular basis. So they all received training, they will be reaching out to groups, and these groups can be large groups, but they can also be the book club that somebody is a part of, or some of those those smaller coffee shop groups, those sorts of things, if they're interested in being a part of it. It can also be formal groups, like different boards and things like that, but I think a lot of it will also be those smaller groups that that maybe wouldn't be a part of the process otherwise unless specifically asked to be engaged and involved. So we're really hoping to get this out as far as we can. I mean, one of the other things that we wanted, and we really wanted to put emphasis on, is that if people are interested in having us at one of their meetings, whether it be a facilitated small group discussion, or just at the meeting for 10 minutes to say, this is what the strategic plan is, this is how you can be involved, we really want to encourage people to reach out to us and let us know as well. So we do have a an email address set up specifically for this, so it's strategicplan@lawrenceks.org. So those who are interested in having us come out to them, this will be a really good avenue that they can reach out to us directly, and we can get something set up. All right, I wanted to talk a little bit about the data because I think this is an important component for for several reasons, but all of the data collected throughout this process will be compiled and analyzed by Novak, our consulting firm. This isn't something that all the data is going to come to me, and then I'm going to send it to them. This is going to go directly from whoever facilitated that meeting to the Novak Consulting Group, so they can really do their work to analyze that data, and it's not all being funneled through the manager's office or or any single person within the the organization. And so that helps keep, I think it helps give people a little bit more confidence that what they say is going to go directly to the consultant, and they can be really open and honest during these conversations. And like I mentioned, they will compile all of that information into a report similar to what they did last year or several years ago, the last time we did this, and it will be given to you all in a final report before your retreat on March 28th. So all of this is ultimately coming back to you. We're hoping that you can help us in this engagement component as much as you can, but ultimately, all this information and all this data is going to come back to you all so that you can take a look at it as you're having those discussions at your retreat and figuring out what this upcoming strategic plan is going to look like. And then I had to ask, I had to finish this with with our request of you, and it's pretty straightforward, and it's laid out, I think, really well in the memo that the Novak Consulting Group put together to you all. But we really want you to think about groups and individuals that that you think would be really good to have be part of this process, and let us know who those are so that we can reach out or let them know that the survey is available and they can go through that avenue to participate. But I think that'll be really important that you all can let us know who you think we should reach out to as well. We've started a list, but it is by no means covering everybody that should be a part of this process, so we're really going to look to you all, as well as others who are interested in this, to to let us know who who should be involved in this. And I think this is a really exciting opportunity. I think it's something that I think we've been talking about for a really long time, so I think your excitement, your enthusiasm about this really goes a long way in terms of garnering some of that in the community and really getting people involved in the process. And then obviously, it would be great for those city-hosted meetings if you all would kind of pick and choose. There's a lot of them, so obviously, you can't all come to all of them, but it would be nice if you were able to provide some welcoming remarks of those. And if you're not able to, that's absolutely no worry, we can do that as well, but there's something special about having a commissioner there. Okay, I went through that relatively quickly, but in general, that's that's the process that we are working through, and as you know, it's a relatively tight timeline, so we're trying to get all of this done by March 7th, so our consultants have time to actually compile, analyze everything, get it to you before the retreat, and that way we have something in place by the time we're really bringing some of the budget discussions back to you all later on in the year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Yeah, I would ask, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Asked, are you, do you have any plans to video this, any of those meetings at all?
So the meetings are not scheduled in rooms where video is really possible, and I think there's some concerns as well about, we want all the feedback to come to you all, but what we don't really want is the, you know, Tom said this at this meeting. We want people to be able to feel like they can be open and honest about things they do like about the city, but there's also going to be some things that maybe they don't like so much about the city. So I think if it's videotaped, you may not get that full, honest feedback, and in the facilities that we have these meetings scheduled for, I don't know that we would be able to logistically do it either.
In the slide where you talked about our partner entities that are going to be consulted, is our legislative delegation in that, or are they in a separate meeting? I think having them meet together with facilitator could be very useful.
Yeah, that's that's excellent. I don't think that it was something that we initially identified, but we can absolutely invite them to that. That's a great suggestion.
Any other questions? Danielle, I don't know if you've picked up in the last few years how excited I am about this, and it's finally here. I don't know if I've, I've been pretty subtle about it, I think.
Yeah, yes. I picked up on that.
It's a really exciting process, so I'm very thankful for all the work that you've done on this, and I'm really looking forward to it, but I will, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Let me, let me ask one more question, please. Does this dovetail with our survey that was it ETC is doing?
Yes.
Is that going to be some of the data that's involved in this as well?
Yes, yes.
So that's basically a scientifically stat sample?
Yes, and I should have mentioned that. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, we will have them report on that data before your March 28th retreat, so yes.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, we will open it up for public comment.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I didn't really come prepared for this, so this is just based on what I've just heard. So to hear from as many people as possible, the city needs to find a way to reach out to the college-aged young people. I don't think 20-somethings are going to want to go to the meetings. Also, when it comes to the golden tickets, I say each commissioner should give at least one ticket to someone aged 18 to 21, and at least four to people under the age of 30. If the golden tickets are meant to try to get people who aren't normally involved, involved, I say that the younger folks are the ones that need to be coming here more to city commission, and we need to hear more from from their voices. And also Snapchat, young people aren't using Facebook. I say the city needs to find a way to start using Snapchat. I work with young people, and all the like 18 to 20-somethings, they're using Snapchat. Also, I hope the city can keep track of the people's ages, so if only 10% of an age range that represents 25% of the population participate, we can use math to estimate how the people not participating feel. Thank you.
Public comment on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the commission. Thanks, Danielle. And our our action was to receive the update, so I don't think that we need to.
Provide direction as appropriate.
Oh, yes. We provided a little bit of that anymore.
Is this when we say we're excited? Yes. Yeah, it's going to be a good process. I'm looking forward to it and appreciate the the efforts and 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 I appreciate Mr. Flowers' comments on the young people. I think we do definitely need to try and get some of them in and and get them in. We're going to have to try harder, probably. They probably won't show up to the Carnegie.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm Casey Tumay. I'm an Assistant City Manager. I'm here tonight to give you our social service overview, and I'm going to click through some slides, but I have my notes down here, so forgive me if I'm I'm not making eye contact as I try to work the technology. And tonight, we're just going to give you a brief highlight of some of the relevant laws related to social service, just to manage expectations. It's not an in-depth legal analysis by any means. Just wanted to make sure that you all have some of the same information. We've had lots of conversations. We've had lots of conversations about social service and multiple commissioners have asked questions, so we just want to make sure that we're providing you all with the same information so that when it comes time for you all to talk about social services, you'll have kind of a common level of understanding about the issues. We'll review our current level of support, talk a little bit about the different types of funds that the city provides to social services and the funding sources for those funds. We'll touch on the funding processes used to allocate those dollars and highlight the 2020 funding levels for social services. Then the last thing we'll do is just briefly again, touch on some other governmental funding So as far as the definition of social services, the city doesn't have a formal definition anywhere. Historically, we talk about social services in the budget context, and over the years, we've categorized social services a little bit differently. The 2020 budget document, if you look at pages 130 and 131, you'll see a list of what we call kind of an umbrella term of outside agencies. And then those outside agencies are split up into social service providers, economic development agencies, and other. And the other category is one that has kind of varied over time, too. Some of the agencies that fall under that category are, have maybe been referred to as vendors sometimes. Other, over the years, other times, we've talked about them as agencies that are external to the city, but maybe they provide a service on behalf of the city. The Humane Society is a good example of that. The city has a statutory responsibility to provide animal shelter service because we have an animal control ordinance. So the city does not provide that service. We contract out with the Lawrence Humane Society to do that. But because that is a large community agency of interest, we want to make sure that we're very clear in our budget document about what those dollars are that are being allocated. I listed a few others down here that sometimes we talk about and sometimes we don't in this conversation, one being the Health Department. So currently, the city and Douglas County jointly fund both the operations of the Health Department and the construction, but also the ongoing maintenance of the Community Health Building where the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department is located. So for tonight, we will be talking about the Health Department in our conversation. Housing Authority is another example. The Housing Authority is a component unit of the city. It's included in our financial statements. It's sort of a quasi-city function, city department. But again, because there's a social service component to the services that they provide, I've included that in my remarks tonight. And then other city programs, as we'll go through in our conversation, you'll see what the city does have some programs where we provide assistance or we offer subsidies or reduce rates. So we are going to talk about those in the social service context as well. Any questions about any of that?
Casey, on the statutory obligation on the Humane Society, can you provide at some point a reference on that?
Not off the top of my head.
But at some point, can you give that for us? Thank you.
Sure. So to move on to kind of some of the relevance, whether it's the state constitution or state statutes, the city code, city, it should really say city policies and programs or resolutions and agreements. There's a lot of different sources out there. So again, I just wanted to briefly highlight some of the relevant ones, starting with the state constitution. So the Article 7, Section 4, I've provided here the wording there. It mentions that the respective counties of the state shall provide as may be prescribed by law for those inhabitants who by reason of age, infirmity, or other misfortune may have claims upon the aid of society. The state may participate financially in such aid and supervise and control the administration thereof. So this is a constitutional article that we've heard commissioners have discussed, and so we wanted to make sure that we included it here. Other state statutes that have come up, listed here some for your reference and provided a link if you want to follow that, to go out and read those statutes in their entirety. Did want to highlight a late addition this afternoon. Our legal folks wanted to make sure that we pointed out KSA 39744 here that actually relates back to that constitutional provision. In the 70s, the state assumed responsibilities for what had been the duties of social welfare boards. So did just want to highlight that since we added that sort of late this afternoon. Apologize for that late addition, but our research continues as we find out more information about these different agencies. As far as city code provisions, I've listed several here, the first being Charter Ordinance 33. We'll get a little bit further into discussion of the alcohol liquor tax, but Charter Ordinance 33 outlines what the uses of those alcohol liquor funds are for, alcoholic liquor, excuse me. Also, related to that topic, Section 1-1401 of the city code is where the Alcohol Advisory Board exists. Our Affordable Housing Advisory Board also in the city code. And then our low income and elderly rates for both solid waste and water and sewer charges. I wanted to make sure you had those city code provisions as well. And then again, this really should say city policies and programs, and Brandon helped me catch that I said sidewalk policy here, but it's actually the Financial Assistance Guidelines for our Sidewalk Improvement Program. All that wouldn't fit in my box here, but I did want to provide a link to the website that outlines our program for financial assistance for folks for sidewalk repairs. And that program calls for income-based assistance for folks who are needing to repair sidewalk and are making less than 80% of the area median family, median family income, pardon me. I also wanted to make note here that we do have a policy in our Transit Department that's an alternative fares policy, and it allows for up to 1% of the previous year's fare box and fare bus, or in bus pass sales to be given away to agencies that request assistance. They have some different parameters. A particular agency is limited to a request of a total of $880 a year, and a maximum contribution per request is 440. I ask our transit folks, and in 2019, the Dare Drop-In Center was the only agency that requested those funds. Prior to 2019, other agencies that have received support from those transit bus passes have been, maybe rack workers have reached out, or other folks in the school district who have reached out because there's a particular individual or family that needs some assistance. There's an application process they go through and pursuant to that policy, we're able to provide some assistance in that respect. Oddly enough, had an email about that today.
Where would we find that? There's no link there.
I didn't have the policy. It's not linked on our website anywhere. We can make sure and get that policy to you all.
Don't think I've ever heard of that policy.
And then our last category of resolutions and agreements, again, probably not an exhaustive list, but the ones that have kind of been mentioned recently in respect to social services. The resolution that talks about the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority, creation of the Health Board. We do have an inter-local agreement with Douglas County that talks about Burt Nash. And then these last two, I wanted to highlight, the 2019 Agreements for City Funds. If you follow that link, it takes you to this page, and you'll see a list. It gives you the ability to sort by funding source, or then you can also just scroll through and look at the agencies in alphabetical order. When you expand there, and I'll just select Burt Nash since it's the first one, you can find the name of the program for what funding they received, both their, in this case, 18 budget, the 19 request, and the 19 recommended amount. The reason I included the link to the 19 materials is because this provides the most current agreement that we have. We're in the process of working on those 2020 agreements with the agencies right now. And when we get them, they'll be posted, but wanted to make sure you knew all of these were here. So you can follow along and see all the different recitals that talk about the use, how those, how funds will be used, how they go about getting the funds dispersed, what the reporting requirements are, et cetera. Then also, in the app, the app, oh, here, let me switch. I'm going to come down here and practice with these links. The 2020 page, that's very similar. You can see the application that we have agencies fill out. And if you scroll all the way after reading all of this information about what, again, what they're applying to do with the funds, how they identify the need. I don't expect anybody to read all that. I'm just scrolling down here to show there are links. Agencies are asked to provide their most recent financial audit, most recent annual report, and most recent IRS Form 990. So those documents are here if you want to open up and look at those. Questions about any of that?
Casey?
Yes.
The, if you go back to the slide, the resolutions and agreements slide, the Health Board Resolution 7153 is provided under the provisions of Kansas Statute 65201, I believe.
Okay, what was your question?
The question is, is there a similar Kansas statute with regard to the Housing Authority? And if there is, can you give me a reference to that?
I would have to refer to my friend Randy Larkin.
My good friend, lawyer, of course.
Hopefully, we'll be friends after this.
There is, I don't know off the top of my head.
If that's something we can do, fine. I'd like to be able to read it.
Yes. There is something that allows the county or the county and the city to combine for the Housing Authority. I don't know off the top of my head what it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Casey?
Okay, so we talked about sort of the relevant background. And now let's talk a little bit about the current support. So we have different methods of support that the city provides to these social service agencies, direct financial support, indirect or in-kind support, grants and donations, and then utility assistance. So first, in terms of direct financial support, this makes more sense when it's in PowerPoint, but I, we'll get through it. Our General Operating Fund wanted to provide both the 2019 and the 2020 budget for social service funding. You can see in 2020, the budget includes just over 1.5 million of direct financial support to social service agencies. From our Special Alcohol Fund, the 2020 budget has 736,000. Again, we'll drill down into each one of these as we continue. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, on this table, I just listed the amount for social service agencies. We'll get to this in a minute, but the Affordable Housing Trust Fund also provides funding to some housing developers, and that didn't really seem to fit in the context of this conversation, so I've only reflected dollars that, again, go to those more social service type providing agencies. And the reason to be determined is in the 2020 column there, our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, there is a budget adopted for 2020, but those allocations have not been made yet. So those are, those will be determined later in 2020. So in terms of the process for the General Fund, prior to our 2021 budget, social service funding was all handled by the Social Service Funding Advisory Board, which was a mouthful. And that board looked both at the General Fund dollars and dollars from the Special Alcohol Fund. They developed a set of recommendations that were provided to the city commission. Those usually came either with the city manager's recommended budget or between the city manager's recommended budget and when you all adopted the budget in August. With our 2021 budget, the process is going to be a little different because late last year, the change was made to the Social Service Funding Advisory Board. And now that board will only be looking at allocate, making recommendations for allocation of the alcohol dollars. What will the process be for the General Fund? Staff is currently working on that, and it's likely going to be some kind of matrix that is going to require agencies to fill out an application that shows how they connect to the strategic plan, and some other set of criteria that staff will develop to measure outcomes towards meeting the strategic goals of the city. But for now, we'll say it's under development. So in terms of the allocations by agency, you can see here, they vary in terms of the size of the award and the agencies and the programs that are being supported. The largest in 2020 was the allocation to Burt Nash for their homeless outreach team of 145,000. And the smallest was to Catholic Charities, which I think is $2,000 for 2020. One observation, having participated as the liaison to the Social Service Funding Advisory Board over the years, is as the number of requests increased, the dollars per agency decreased because it was difficult to say yes or no to a particular agency. So sometimes you'll see, Catholic Charities is a good example. They didn't request or receive funds in 19, but they did in 2020. Let's see. I think the, again, just an observation, I think the Advisory Board had very clear criteria in the Charter Ordinance 33 as to what those dollars were used for. As far as criteria for the General Fund, the application did ask agencies to link to the city's strategic plan, but it was a little bit less formal and for that, for the Social Service Funding Advisory Board to make recommendations based on that strategic plan. That's why we think a matrix might work better. Let's see. Just scrolling on through, here's another screen of agencies that received funds. You'll note there is an entry here for bus passes to the Salvation Army. I did want to point out, we talked a little bit about the bus pass policy, and that policy is different than this allocation, which is actual General Fund dollars that the Salvation Army uses to buy bus passes. So a little different, still bus, related to bus passes, but processed a little bit differently. Let's see. Then here, again, we talked a little bit about the other agencies. So for 2020, here are the other agencies that I thought fit the definition of social service in the context of tonight's conversation. You'll see the Lawrence Community Shelter there has a couple, has an asterisk. Like the Salvation Army, they too receive bus passes. Theirs come from our Transit Fund. So I noted the dollar amount here, but because it's the Transit Fund and not the General Fund, I didn't want to put it up there in their allocation. And then also, you may remember that the city and the county hired a consultant to look at the Lawrence Community Shelter, and so the city's share of that cost isn't reflected in the amount shown on the table. And then Lawrence Art Center is down here. That asterisk, just to explain, in 2019, the scholarship program was funded, but it was funded from the Special Recreation Fund. So again, this table was showing General Fund dollars. In 2020, those dollars were moved into the General Fund. Okay. And then I wanted to just include this General Fund forecast to show sort of, these all come from the 2020 budget, to show for the General Fund, the Alcohol Fund, and Housing Fund, what were, what the financial picture is looking like back when we put these projections Questions about the General Fund?
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Casey.
On to the Alcohol Fund. So as I mentioned, the city used Home Rule to charter ordinance out of a state statute that talks about how the alcohol liquor tax is to be used. And so I wanted to provide that language for you all here. It's small, so. It's small, so I just wanted to highlight some of the important words. Those are kind of the categories that the board has talked about as they've looked at this over the years. The first is prevention of alcoholism and drug abuse. The second is detoxification or treatment. C is intervention. D is law enforcement. E is education, and that includes counseling, public information efforts. Then F is prevention, and again, intervention. That one specifically talks about, could it be a partial element of a program, not the sole purpose of that program? And then G is any program activity or effort that the governing body determines that it discourages, prevents, intervenes, or addresses issues related to alcohol and drug abuse. So again, we did change the mission of the Social Service Funding Board, brought that back to just being recommend, making recommendations related to the alcohol dollars. So prior to 2021, they were part of the Social Service Funding Recommendations that came prior to the budget. For 2021, the Alcohol Board will be making recommendations following adoption of the budget. So it'll work more similar to how our transient guest tax grant funds are allocated. Those recommendations will come to you, and you all will make the decision. At budget time, we'll simply budget a dollar amount based on whatever our revenue projection is for the alcohol fund. Questions about that? Here are the agencies in 2019 and 2020 that received allocations from the alcohol fund. The largest is the Burt Nash RAP Program. You can see here, 307,000 in 2020. And the smallest in this category is a tie between Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Lawrence Alcoholic Recovery Home, which both received 9,000. Again, other agency, the Lawrence Community Shelter, that decision to remove it from the Social Service Funding Advisory Board, I think, was made two years ago. So the board did not consider them as a social service agency. The city manager simply made a recommendation for the budget for the Lawrence Community Shelter. Oh, note the zero in 2020 is because all of that funding came from the general fund in the 2020 budget. And here is our projection for our alcohol fund. The main point here is we try to spend, because these are dollars that are getting allocated out to agencies, we're spending pretty close to what we bring in every year. Next is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And as I said, Section 1, Nash 1808, talks about the creation of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And the important language here is that the purpose of that board is to make recommendations to the governing body regarding the expenditures of money from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in order to fund projects as reviewed and approved by the board, that being you all, that are consistent with the purposes of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Another change that was made recently was here in Section D, expenditures of the Home Investment Partnership Fund are also going to be part of the work of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, known as Ahab. Previous to that, the CDAC, you may have heard, provided direction on that. We'll talk a little bit more. CDAC also used to make CDBG recommendations, if you can keep your acronyms straight. CDBG will talk, will be rolled back to staff, and staff will be making recommendations regarding to those funding going forward. But the Home Investment Partnership, because there is a direct connection to affordable housing, the commission decided made sense for Ahab to make recommendations regarding those funds. And then again, there's, oh, no, excuse me. Okay. So here's the budget for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from 2019 and from 2020. Again, you'll note that the amount here shown is different than the amount on the previous table because there are funds that are, that were, in 2019, that were awarded to developers, and so I didn't include them previously, but did want to acknowledge that there are other housing trust fund dollars being spent. Okay. As far as the allocations, here are the 2019 awards. You can see the different agencies that receive funding. And these are links to the applications that explain the criteria that the Ahab evaluates the proposals against, has other information. You all can look through those at your leisure. Just jumps ahead a little bit. So that's all in terms of direct financial support. So the next category would be indirect or in-kind support. And this primarily comes in the form of the use of city-owned or city-county-owned facilities. So you'll see here a list of agencies that provide social services in the community that are located or operating in city-owned facilities. You'll see one asterisk here about the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department. We had to make an estimate of the value of the in-kind contribution for that agency. The others that you see here all provide that information in the footnotes of their financial statements. The Health Department is part of the county's audit, and the county doesn't follow the same auditing standards. So that inclusion is not a requirement. So what we did was looked at the value and the square footage of Burt Nash, and the value and the square footage of BNA, Visiting Nurses Association, which are all located in that same facility, came up with an average cost per, or value per square foot, and applied that to the square footage of the Health Department, just to give you a rough idea. Keep in mind that, again, that is a joint city-county facility, so the maintenance of that is split 50/50 between the city and county of that community health building is split 50/50 annually, while the operation costs are 60% paid by the county and 40% paid by the city. Let's see. The other note on here, Senior Resource Center for Douglas County had a voicemail conversation with Megan Poindexter, and they are working on putting together the new value for their next financial statement that will reflect the value of the renovations to Fire Station 1, which is where they're located.
Could you go back to the Health Department? When you talked about the 50/50 split versus the 60/40 split, could you?
Sure. So the annual operating expenses of the Health Department are funded 60% by the county and 40% by the city. The maintenance of the building is 50/50. So the, we have a city employee who is a building maintenance person at that facility. The cost of that position and the expense of the work that he does to that building, we take that and we bill Douglas County for half of that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
So the Health Department is part, or it's included in the county's financial statements, like the public library is included in the city's financial statements?
I don't, I don't know that I can speak to the exact, if they're accounted for the exact same way. I just know that...
Oh, they're included in the county's financial statements and the library's included in the city?
Those are both accurate.
Okay. And does the county provide any split on the library like we do on the Health Department?
No. The library has its own mill levy and...
And it's a city mill levy that we set?
It's a, it's a mill levy that the board recommends to you all.
And we set, yes. It's a city levy, yes.
Correct.
Right.
But they have a cap on that mill levy.
That's also correct. Okay.
So could we go back to that list of indirect support? Now, this list, have we ever tracked that before, the indirect support that we've been giving these organizations?
By track, you mean?
Just tracking, I just mean, you know, within our budget to show the support that we're giving in addition to any, any cash, so to speak?
I wouldn't say that we've actively tracked it, no. The agencies have, if they receive funding for operating from us, are required to give us copies of their financial statements and their applications. So in theory, we have collected that information, but we haven't assembled it and posted it anywhere.
So is that something that's being considered in applications coming in in 2021, that they would also need to state whatever indirect support we're providing them?
We could certainly consider that.
As part of the consideration?
Casey, if we're asking questions, can we go back to the alcohol slide, the direct support from the alcohol fund?
Sorry for the scroll.
That's it, I think. I mean, the, the graph that...
Oh.
So the black line is the fund balance is a percentage of expenditure, right? And so in 2019, the expenditures exceeded the revenue significantly, and so the fund balance went down. So it's hard to maintain those levels of spending from 2019 for this fund. I mean, it's essentially unsustainable to do that.
Yeah, there were, that is true. There were some one-time expenditures out of that fund.
Okay. I think it's important for everybody to know we can't maintain the, that level of expenditure.
Yeah, and that's why the graph, the blue and the red bars are relatively equal.
And we went from a 20-something percent of expenditure to around five that year.
Right.
So, yeah.
So just real quick on that same graph, I just now noticed this for the first time. For 2020, we're showing expenditures of a little bit over 800,000, I believe that says there. But I'm looking on our budget book, and it says we're spending 736,000. Is there a reason for that difference?
Hmm, I'd have to ask my budget folks.
My guess is that this is a projection of what we were going to do that came from before the, we actually adopted the, this was in the, the plan, and this is what we adopted.
We can certainly follow up. Thank you. Finished with our indirect support conversation, unless anybody had other questions or...
I was curious about the last two on that chart, Willow and the Shelter. What indirect, they in city buildings or something?
Yes, so the Willow operates out of a facility on Moody Road, and the Children's Shelter has a facility on Missouri Street.
Those are city properties? I didn't know.
The, both pay rent to the city, so the amount here is the, the value of the in-kind contribution. So the difference between the rent, the rent that they pay us and the market value rent of a similar facility. Okay, so next would be grants and donations. So the examples here are Parks and Recreation scholarships, sidewalk repair, we talked a little bit about, other discounts, and then sponsorships. And by sponsorships, I mean when we're asked to be a sponsor for an event, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a sec. So first, our scholarships. So in the city's budget, we have a fund for the We Folks Scholarship Fund. So we have fundraising events, people make donations, and then we use those dollars to help provide Parks and Rec classes, scholarships for people who need assistance, financial assistance that are income qualified, to access those programs. And you'll see here, the budget in 19 is 50,000, and in 2020, it's 40,000. Again, sidewalk repairs, we talked about the, the, I'm sorry, the financial assistance program is for folks that are making less than 80% of the area median family income.
Do you know how much we've got budgeted for that this year? Thought that was in the CIP, maybe not.
I don't, we'll find out.
I think it was 800,000, or either that or a million, too, because there was some left over from last year.
There was a carryover.
Million something. We can work up the specific number.
Million, two.
Yeah.
There is.
Find it? It wasn't, what was it?
Million, two.
Million, two. So discounts, we talked a little bit about the transit, contribution of alternate fares policy. Again, that's a first-come, first-served basis. The policy goes, allows the transit administrator up to 1% of the prior year's revenues for that policy. We talked about that it was separate from the allocation of bus passes that LCS and Salvation, and the Salvation Army also receive. Other discounts are pool passes. The Parks and Recreation Department provided over $27,000 of free or reduced aquatic passes to different agencies in 2019. Some example agencies are Burt Nash, the Community Shelter, United Way, Kennedy Elementary School, Boys and Girls Club. Other discounts, Parks and Rec offers a senior discount for folks based on their age. And then lastly, the comment from Parks and Rec was that our facilities currently are free of charge for folks. So that's sort of a, an off, a social service that the city is providing.
And one question about the bus fares, do you know if we provide any bus fares for Cottonwood?
Cottonwood purchases bus passes from the city, but they're at the regular rates.
Thank you.
And then sponsorships. So again, examples here are Project Graduation, or the Douglas County Community Foundation's Valor Awards. So the city manager's budget every year for our city manager's office includes an allocation of, I think it's 2, 2,500 or $5,000 discretion for the city manager to provide those sponsorships as they come in. Project Graduation is the one that comes in every year that I can, that I can think of as the best example of that. But did want to point out that we do do that. Okay, in terms of utility assistance programs, we do offer a reduced monthly solid waste service fee and water and sewer fee, and the eligibility criteria for both are the same. They require folks to be 60 years of age or older, and the income requirement changes every year, and it goes into the code when you all adopt the rate ordinances. So our current income guidelines are not to exceed 13,739 for an individual, and 18,601 for a family.
So how did you determine that? How do we determine that number?
They are based on a calculation that's called out in that code provision, and it's percent of the, let's see.
So it's within the code?
Yeah. Let's go to scroll back up there. Oh, I thought I had it named.
9413?
Yeah, I have the citation there. We can, I'll send you all an email with that following information as well. Okay.
On that, Casey, do you know what the cost to the city was for that program? The difference between what we would have charged at regular rates and the discounted amount?
I'll get that for you as well.
There's no disability aspect of eligibility on this? It's just age? Okay.
Age and income. There was conversation, or has been previously, conversation about expanding that program. Some analysis was done last year about if we could expand it. The direction at that time was in a way that was cost neutral, and we went back and looked at, the discount right now is 35% for water and sewer. We went back and looked at, well, what if instead of 35, it was 10 or 25, and brought that back to the commission. Another piece of that conversation, though, was our ability to... Another piece of that conversation, though, was our ability to administer that program. And as you know, we just rolled out new utility billing software that's supposed to provide us with the ability to administer rates differently. So we'll be looking at, we can look at that again. Also, we looked at, we've had commissioners ask about the option of a roll-up, where folks who can afford it can round up their bill to the next dollar and have that, those dollars help subsidize folks that need some financial assistance. Okay, so those are the city, the current levels of city support. If there are other questions you have about that, I can jot those down. Otherwise, I just had one quick brief mention.
Any questions? All right.
So in terms of other governmental funding partners, provided you a link to, the county uses an open budget kind of platform, similar to the one that we use called OpenGov, and so I wanted to provide a link here to their, what they call, community partners. It's some of the similar agencies, some that are different, but you can see the funding that they provide to those agencies. And then, also wanted to make a note that while they are federal dollars, the city does administer or pass through CDBG and home funds. So provided a link to the most current investment summary, and you'll see those public service dollars from the CDBG fund are, some are allocated to city programs, but some are also allocated to public service. They call them public service agencies. So wanted to make sure to highlight that. Okay, with that, I can jot down other questions that you all have. Otherwise, I would turn it over to you to hear public comment, and then hopefully you all can have some discussion if there are other items you're curious about, so that we can have all time to prepare that prior to your strategic plan.
Thank you, Casey.
Okay. Well, we will open it up for public comment.
Good to see you all. Elizabeth Keever, Executive Director of Just Food. I want to thank you all for taking the opportunity to dig into the issue. Social service funding is really important for organizations to have. They're one of the pillars that make organizations have steady financials. You know, we're looking at opportunities where we can fundraise and do things like that. It really helps leverage funders in the community and really the organization's standing by having support from the community. So it means a lot that the city invests in social service agencies, and I really appreciate that you're taking the opportunity to evaluate the remetric system on how to do the general funds. Just Food serves thirteen percent of the Lawrence community, thirteen percent, and we receive less than half a percent of the budget from that fund. It really seems like the system really only benefits those who have been a part of the process for a long time. No one seems to really want to cut agencies back, so if you, it doesn't really incentivize new agencies who are being innovative in their field and wanting to come up with ideas that are problem-solving. And by only contributing less than half a percent to an agency that does so much, it's really detrimental. So I really look forward to seeing what the measurables will be on that, and how we'll find opportunities to support agencies broadly that are making significant impact. So thank you for doing that work and looking into that.
Thank you.
Dan Partridge, Director at the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department. And as you embark on this really robust and thorough process, I would just encourage you to take a look at the city financial report that we submitted last week that describes how city funds were used at the Health Department. I know all of you have a good understanding of the work we do and how we use city dollars, but I encourage you to take another look at that, and if you have questions, please, please reach out.
Thank you. Other public comment on this item?
Katie Walsh, very, very briefly. I may have misheard, but about the sidewalk assistance, apparently there's not a link on the city website, and it'd be awesome if there was an easy-to-get-to link, so, thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Is there, is there anywhere on the website where that program can be accessed?
Yes, Mayor, there is. And Casey's link actually goes to the program webpage, so I'm sorry if there's some confusion, but there's, the webpage provides a lot of resources about the program and how folks can get plugged into the financial assistance.
So how do you get to that web information?
The way that I get there personally is just by Googling Lawrence Sidewalk Hazard or Improvement Program.
Okay.
You can also, you can do the same search in our, on our website. It's one of the top search results usually.
And there is a link on that PowerPoint that's an active link. I just mislabeled it as sidewalk policy, and it should have said sidewalk program.
Thank you. Other general public comment on this item?
Hi, everyone. I'm Renee Kuhl. I just wanted to thank Casey for your very thorough report, and many of my burning questions have been answered, so that's really exciting. I just wanted to also offer that, I think what, when we talk about direct funding for social services, what's not always accounted for between even indirect support, direct support, is the cost of poverty on our institutions and our communities. So it's very sometimes difficult to really account for how poverty is impacting our fire and medical services, our emergency services, our schools and other institutions. And the return on the investment that you make in social services is really the compelling story about why social services funding is so crucial and important. Certainly, I know that that's the case with people experiencing homelessness. So all of our institutions are bearing the cost of homelessness and poverty in terms of people's health outcomes, in terms of their quality of life, in terms of the kinds of tragedies and things we have to respond to in the street when, when people's lives fall into disrepair. So, so I think that's really crucial to consider, and I just, along those lines, as the community shelter makes some shifts and evolution in how we're approaching, how we deal with homelessness, I wanted to acknowledge that the history of how we've been funded is a little bit confusing even for me as a newcomer to kind of navigate and understand where, where we fall into this, this conversation. And so I wanted to leave you with, again, are the goals and the things that we're focused on for the next year, when it comes, the next year and beyond, when it comes to addressing homelessness in our community. And those are going to include reducing our length of stay in the shelter for folks who visit us, and moving people into housing as quickly as possible. That's a primary goal moving forward. We're going to increase our exits to permanent housing for folks, so we want to see people move into housing arrangements where they're on the lease or they're on a sublease, and they have the protections that that arrangement affords them. And we want to reduce receiptivism into homelessness, meaning that people with a history of homelessness are matched with the right type of permanent housing and the right type of permanent assistance for them, so that they don't become homeless again. So we really want homelessness to be brief and, and one-time. And so, so that's just kind of how I want to frame, frame that for you. And I'm open, open and ready, ready to discuss with staff and with you guys how we can work together to accomplish those goals. So thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Renee. Any other public comment?
Hi, Megan Pointexter. I'm the Director of the newly remodeled Senior Resource Center, and one of the very fortunate recipients of the indirect support from the city. And sitting and listening tonight and conversations with my colleagues, what I'd love to just express briefly is how grateful I am for the partnerships that are working so hard together to create the most quality-of-life-driven community that we can possibly have in Lawrence. And so much of this is complicated, and it is expensive, and it's difficult. And having voices come around the table to talk about what is the type of community that we want to live in, what do we want for our friends and neighbors, these are the, the pieces of the conversation that I hear and that I am excited about and that I, again, I echo that I'm very grateful that this conversation is happening, and that, you know, we can maybe hit the reset button on a few of the pieces of our thinking to really drive ourselves primarily about searching for the best possible outcomes and the best possible quality of life for our community. So I appreciate this conversation, and that's it.
Thank you.
I'm the CEO at Heartland Community Health Center, and really, did not intend to come say anything tonight, but feel somewhat compelled to do so. I want to thank you all very much for the thorough analysis that you've done and for the consideration of what processes do you look like. It's a Herculean task you have in your weighing these requests from agencies that are all doing really important and very deserving work within the community. When you're looking at a system of care or a community of care, I think the, the way that you really weigh that and the metrics that you use and how you determine where that funding and where sources need to go in making sure that you have a fully well-rounded approach to what a community really needs and what the health of a community really needs through arts education, through nutrition, through connection, through networking, through healthcare. True needs exist in all of these areas. What I'll say from my perspective with Heartland is, I believe healthcare is a basic human right. Fifty-five percent of the patients who come see us at Heartland Community Healthcare have no insurance and no way to pay us. That's four thousand community members, and that number increases by about seventy-five to one hundred every single month. So there is a need, and my story is not unique. It's, it's the same throughout. Needs exist within the community, and I just appreciate that we're looking at metrics and outcomes and true impact when we're making these decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Don't be afraid to step on up there after someone steps away.
I'll sign in afterwards. My name is Gene Dorsey. I live at two zero three eight Emerald Drive. I kind of had a question for the commission. What kind of social service coordination plans do you have when you get around to budgeting in terms of these organizations that are funded by the county, school districts, and the city, so that, say, you cut funding, the county thinks you're providing it, and then they don't provide for what you don't pick up? I think that kind of happened last year with the homeless shelter, and another example might be the RAP program for Burt Nash. It benefits the Lawrence Public School District to a large degree, but they don't have any funding involved currently. So I was just wondering what kind of program or plans you have to coordinate between all the various parties? Thanks.
So on that RAP program, are you talking about the county doesn't have any funds for the RAP program in Lawrence?
No, no, I'm just saying the school district doesn't provide funding for that, although the people are stationed in the schools.
Actually, Gene, my review of the funding of that program was that there was district funding of eighty-seven thousand dollars. Is that wrong?
There's funding from Udora, I think, but I'm not sure.
I think it's something we need to follow up on and get an answer to. It, it, the funding wasn't specified as which district it was, so I didn't know.
Yeah.
And I believe there's an agreement for reimbursement with the county for Udora for that existing position.
Well, I think they do some funding, and then Udora does some.
Well, we'll find out. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it, Gene.
I'll bring that general question back to staff once we've heard all the public comment as well. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Do we want to address how we coordinate broadly around the, around budgeting in different institutions? I know that comes to the main bodies. I think that there's also a role for staff communication, but I think it's primarily communication and maintaining those open lines among one another. But I'll let staff address more broadly if they have more to add.
I think it's something that could be approved, definitely, and just, just coordinating our, what we're trying to accomplish, each of the agencies and the nonprofits. I think there are some coordinated efforts since I've been here in Lawrence. There are some really robust studies around things like food policy. That's the type of approach that I think starts to generate better results, because we have, as a whole community, decided what we want to do and concentrated resources. So, of course, it's being done informally, and that can always be better, but I think a formal approach of defining what we want to accomplish and then using all of the resources of the community to apply those together is the best way to, to make a big difference in the community.
I think that we have a fresh opportunity, too, having approved Plan 2040, working on our second version of our strategic plan, and all of our broader organizations having a lot of fresh faces, and people really excited about the work and less entrenched in what has been, must be. And so there is a lot of opportunity, and I think that we feel, or at least I feel, a responsibility not to squander that energy. Is there any other?
If I could add, so, just a reminder, this is the third of a three-part series requested by the commission to prepare us for the strategic planning process. So we also provided a report and had some participation on economic development, and then that exciting infrastructure subject. We didn't have a lot of public participation at that time. It's a really big thing that we do. And then this one. So those are the three subjects that the commission requested. So we're, we're trying to get to, let's make some big decisions with the strategic planning process, and this is really trying to generate some, some information. I've appreciated the staff trying to gather that information and put it before the community, but particularly the five of you.
It's been great. Any other comments from the commission?
I appreciate the emphasis on metrics and outcomes. I think that's going to be very positive, and I think we'll benefit from that. I'm interested, as I indicated earlier, in getting a better understanding, getting more information about the statutory context. And so I think, you know, having everybody have a chance to know what the underlying statutes are is helpful. And, and there's something that we didn't really talk about, I don't think, maybe I missed it. And, and that kind of dovetails with what Elizabeth was talking about, and that is, we've been working with Elizabeth for a couple of years and a bunch of other people on the summer food lunch program. I mean, we have a lot of kids who aren't getting fed in the summertime, who get fed at school with free or reduced lunches during the school year. And Parks and Rec has, has done a pretty good job, and we're hoping that they're going to do even more to provide programming that will, you know, provide an opportunity for kids to come for programming, and we can feed them while they're there. Okay? So I don't know how you categorize the spending we would do on Parks and Rec programming that would be designed to support this community-supported program that's paid for with federal dollars. So, so I don't know how you put that into this, but I think that's, that that's an important part of what we need to be doing as we think about social service funding. How can we use our programs to leverage other federal money and the efforts of our community partners to accomplish feeding Lawrence kids during the summer who need food? So, I mean, I think that's got to be part of this strategic plan as well.
Yeah, in addition to the statutory information that you're asking for, Stuart, I think it's really important, but we've also got interlocal agreements that actually detail who's supposed to pay for what with the various government organizations that we haven't been following. So we need to make sure that everybody's aware of those and understand when we're making these decisions, we need to look at the entire picture. And I really do appreciate the fact that we are looking at going to a metric system, because it's very important to, to review these applications apples to apples, so to speak, as to who's getting what, and what's the history of it, and, and making decisions that do... as to who's getting what and what's the history of it and making decisions based on the metrics versus this is how I feel about it potentially. So I'm really excited about that, and I think that's going to just make the program that much better. But yes, we do need to support our social services, but we've also got to balance that with the fact that we've got infrastructure that is so far behind in maintaining it. We are underwater in that, and so there's going to be some tough decisions made about social services and infrastructure coming up in the budget year. But that doesn't mean social services is not important because it's very important to our community to maintain that web of safety for our community members. And, you know, the city government can't do it all, but we're going to do what we can and still in work to get our infrastructure back to a point to where we can get on top of it.
When we're talking about the metrics, Casey, were you saying metrics compared to the strategic plan or metrics compared to, you know, success rates or, you know?
I think my cold was maybe contributed to the misunderstanding. I think I said metrics and matrix. I think the thought is that there would be a matrix that we would use, similar to how we use matrix when we look at our CIP projects. So you'd have a set of criteria, and then you'd look at the applications against that set of criteria, which I call a matrix, but also look at the metrics that the agencies provide. So what outcomes are they saying they can meet? And then looking at their ability to meet those in the past, their ability to project what they can do in the future. Is that helping?
Yeah, it's helpful. I mean, I think, you know, I think it's always difficult to over, you know, over metric, you know, to create metricses to apply to all these different social services. I mean, how do you weigh, you know, an application for someone to take a class at the Arts Center versus providing someone food versus, you know, someone supporting the Boys and Girls Club after-school program versus an alcohol recovery program? I mean, those, I mean, you know, try to create metricses and, you know, outcomes in all of those and try to fit everything in a nice little box, I think is a difficult thing to do. And although I don't, I mean, I certainly appreciate it, I don't, I think we have to be careful about how we do that. I would say the other thing is, I think, you know, especially for the people in the crowd, you know, to the extent we're going to have a matrix related to our strategic plan, it's important that all of you are involved in our strategic plan. And what do you want this community to look like? And what do you want, what should we be spending our money on? I mean, infrastructure is very important, and we have to be spending our money on that. But how does that fall in line with our strategic plan? What does this community want us to be spending our money on? I think that's the input we need from all of you, and we need you to be involved, and we need your boards to be involved, and we need people you serve to be involved. Because I think how we develop that strategic plan is going to make a big difference on, you know, how we spend our money. So hopefully, we hear from all of you as part of that project.
And if I could just kind of bounce off what you're saying a little bit. Indeed, we have to worry about our infrastructure and the other things that we invest in, but the numbers that I think Casey showed us here, 1.4, 1.5, 736,000, relatively small numbers. So I think when we think about our statutory obligations, what we are doing, maybe extra than other communities are doing, we can have a little bit of perspective about what those numbers are compared to our, the other money that we spend. Certainly inefficiencies and partnerships are important, but we need, as you said, our partners to tell us where the real investment is and where the most return is for the monies that we're spending on social services.
Yeah, I was going to follow up on that. I was noticing earlier as I was reading my agenda, you know, the largest entity with direct support, direct support, again, different from indirect, but direct support, I think, was 145,000 from the general fund. And, you know, on our agenda tonight and our consent, we spent 260,000, you know, on a sewer flow system, 147,000 to design water flow from Eagle Bend, and 207,000 on the air conditioner at the police facility, just to name a few. You know, so there is, you know, to your point, Courtney, I think there's a lot of, you know, weighing that has to go on in each of those, and I think it's something we have to struggle with as we set the budget, and I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, I do think it is a balance between our sustainability ecologically, sustainability as far as people being able to live within our community, and our future, which includes our infrastructure and our budget, and how we balance all of those things. And we're the ones who are tasked with that hard job. And those are really difficult things to weigh, and that strategic planning process will be a really large part of that, I think. I think that, you know, I want to also talk about our responsibility around public safety. And as we have evolved in our conversation and our research and our understanding of what safety means, particularly when we're talking about primary prevention work, which impacts every single one of our organizations, that is a definition of public safety and public health, and how we have conversations around that, I think is really important. This was a starting point for that, for sure, and I think it will continue into the budget process. But let's talk about what primary prevention means and where we make inroads on serious social issues that have been on a hamster wheel for, you know, decades. So I'm hopeful that we can really start to kind of dig into that broader conversation of what that means and apply it to our public safety responsibilities. I do think it's important to talk about our statutory obligations, et cetera, but I also think it's important to point out that we're not precluded from engaging in what our community prioritizes. And I think it's very clear, the many folks in our community prioritize taking care of our residents and providing for their health and safety. So there is what is provided by law, but there's also what is provided by the heart of our community and our desire to be better, our desire to lift one another up, and, you know, frankly, make ourselves obsolete, which would be awesome. I would love to be out of a job, and I'm guessing many people here tonight would also gladly find another profession because the problem is no longer a problem. I doubt that's going to happen in my lifetime, but I also would never want to say that that's never going to happen in my lifetime because perhaps I'm a little naive. And that's okay. So I'm glad that we've started this conversation, and I'm really looking forward to continuing it through the strategic planning process and through our budgeting process. Anything else? Okay, so we received our overview. We will move on then to commission items. If you all are comfortable holding off on a break, and we'll take a five-minute break between now and, between our executive session. So we'll move on to commission items. Are there any future agenda items to add?
At some point, I do want to look at the ordinance of the winter shelter, 15-person ordinance, you know. I think it'll come up somewhat in the context next week in our study session, kind of how we want to do it. Certainly, we're not going to change it fast enough to affect this year, so, I mean, I'm not sure we have to rush and put it on the agenda, but I think in the context, we want to look at that as we look at, you know, something for next year.
Is that something that we could add to our study session for next week?
Yes.
At least to begin into that conversation. Do we need a vote on that? Okay.
No. I think, yeah, I thought that was just part of the conversation, actually.
Any other future agenda items? Future work session items? Future other items?
I'd like to suggest something we've talked about before. I'd like maybe an update on the sidewalk program. And specifically, we did see recently some new statistics for the new area that was done, which was nice. But there's an idea, again, that I've been trying to get information from staff about or get some research from staff on, which would create a funding stream, which would be, in essence, kind of sidewalk insurance. So I have a brand-new sidewalk on Castle. Tomorrow, I could start paying on my sidewalk, and in 30 years, I would have a plan for it. Whereas right now, we're just kind of throwing people in the deep end. Or even one thing that does kind of bother me, some of the grant funding that we get for CDBG gap funding or Safe Routes to School, those people are getting new sidewalks, but we're not really looking forward and planning how we're going to replace them in 10, 20, 30 years. So if we could look at something like that, if staff could look into something like that. And then something else I know, Mayor, you've said before, is maybe reprioritizing the way we're doing the sectors. I was concerned that, we started with eight sectors, we cut it, we added a sector, we cut one down, now we have nine sectors. If we keep going that way, we're not going to address it in a timely fashion, which is what we were trying to do in the first place. So if we could get something back from staff about what new ideas are or how maybe that revenue stream, if we could start to implement something like that, might augment that or speed that up. Any thoughts?
Where are we in the most recent section? Haven't we started on that?
They've sent letters, right?
Oh, no. Some people already did it.
The 60 days work.
Is that good for Brandon?
Just told me it was.
Okay.
It was easy. Easy for Brandon. Dave kind of nodded.
And I think, I'm sorry, was there some data that you were looking for that, like in term, yeah, in terms of like numbers and miles of sidewalk that we weren't really getting or?
No, the consistent question that I've had is totally slipping my mind right now.
I'm so sorry.
It's very hot in here.
It was a great idea.
No, oh, it was on taking on each section after we have completed it to the city. And so if that's what you're referring to.
That's what I'm kind of looking towards.
So I don't know if that's something that we've been kind of throwing around for a while. So is that something that, like, that's a pretty big?
Yeah, three, so I heard three items. One is this insurance program, we'll call it that. The second is, do we take them over afterwards? What would that look like after it's new, then the city is the owner? And then the third would be this, how's the selection process done for each neighborhood? And how long is that going to take? So it's kind of criteria for selection of the next one as discussion points and kind of throwing some options in front of you.
Does that address what you, okay.
I would say, I would just clarify, I don't think I'm suggesting the city become the owner of the sidewalks or take responsibility, however you want to say it, from a legal standpoint. Obviously, people need to be scooping their sidewalk, or if there's a crack, they need to be reporting it. The liability issue, I'm not trying to add the liability to that issue, but I think, what I think this sidewalk insurance kind of idea would, if we wrote it well, would address both those things and wouldn't have us on the hook in terms of liability. Just to clarify that point.
Sure.
I was thinking that the selection process for the sectors or whatever you want to call it, with this one we're doing this year, we broke it down into a smaller area just to get the program on a better footing. Is that my understanding? And then next year, we'll look at what we did this year and say, well, maybe we can expand it to a bigger area because we got a much better process. That's what I had understood.
I think, Lisa, part of that's probably going to be driven by cost and how much money we have to work. I think we certainly think that in some of the sectors, depending on how much the funding is, it could take more than a year to get through a lot of those sectors or many, many years to get through some. So we've got a lot of assessments and discussion to do, but we can bring more ideas to you.
And again, that's one of the reasons I'm interested in. This would be a revenue stream that we don't have now that would help us look maybe more effectively at the areas we haven't done already.
Okay. Thanks, Courtney. Any other other items? Okay, we will move on to the city manager's report.
There are just a couple of items in there. I just want to kind of celebrate with you. The copavillion on the Boroughs Creek Trail in Linear Park was, received an award, and it is something that can't help but catch anybody's eye that is driven by it. It's distinctive and unique, and obviously, some experts in the field also believe that was special, too, and gave us, gave us awards. So it's good to, great partnership, too. That's it.
Can I jump off the rails real quick and say also, I would like to acknowledge the awesome work that Parks and Rec did downtown after the celebration after the Super Bowl and how quickly we returned to a normal downtown. So I was very impressed with that work and thankful for all of our city employees who contributed to that. And I'm just tagging that on to the award because it's peripherally a kudos.
And I would just add on that I love that they changed the train to Chiefs. That was amazing to see the train all decorated in orange and red. It was fun.
Any other commissioner questions on this item? Any public comment? Okay, thank you. We will move on to the calendar. Anything to add?
Just curious about the, I should have asked this earlier maybe, but, you know, for the, I mean, these different strategic planning ones? I mean, all five of us show up, that's okay?
We will add them to the calendar.
Okay.
So that they're publicly listed.
Okay, good. Then I guess maybe have some sort of sign up to make sure at least one of us gets to all of them. I mean, I think most of them I could, I can't come to mall, but there's quite a few I can come to, but, I mean, I think it is important that at least one of us is there, if not multiple ones of us, so.
Anything else on the calendar?
There was something that came up a few months ago when we were invited, I guess maybe it was early January, and Commissioner Rowley brought it up, which was the Nehemiah Assembly. And we didn't really talk that out. We just, I think we just added it to the calendar about, I mean, in year, last year it happened on a Tuesday, so I don't think anybody went. I think it was the same night as the Hub, so I don't think anyone went to that one. But in years past, there's been, two commissioners were sent specifically to do that. So I didn't know if we wanted a conversation about that, if everyone just wanted to go as they wanted to go.
I thought we had talked about it and requested a recommendation for staff on how to approach that. That's just my off-the-cuff memory. I'm not sure when I brought that.
I just, well, then I would like to follow up on it because I've been, they've sent me two emails, and I feel like I'm dodging them, and I'm not trying to. I really will tell them whatever we decide, but I don't know what we decided.
And I believe in the past, we had staff recommendation on that, and so I'd like to request that again for us for now so we can respond appropriately and in a timely fashion.
It is a public meeting, I mean, it's announced a public meeting, so anybody can go, but whether, who represents, if anybody represents the city, that would be the question. But anybody can go.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We'll look for the recommendation on that. Anything else? All right. Well, our next regular agenda item is to consider a motion to recess into executive session. Do we have a motion?
Can we take a break and come back?
So do we want to take a break and then make the motion? Or do we want, okay. Let's take a five-minute, five or 10? What do you want? Five-minute break, and then, and then we'll come back. Five-minute break, and then, and then we'll come back. Into executive session. Do we have a motion?
I move that we recess into executive session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorneys regarding employment law pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. At the end of the executive session, the City Commission will resume its regular meeting in the City Commission Room.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Bulley, a second by Commissioner Larson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Back in 45.
Okay, we are back.
I move that we recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorneys regarding employment law pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. At the end of the executive session, the City Commission will resume its regular meeting in the City Commission Room.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bulleye, second by Commissioner Larson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
You want to make the motion?
I already did it twice.
All right, we are back. We have nothing to report, but we would request that city staff bring the issue of unions back to the commission at a future commission meeting. Do we need a motion on that?
We second the motion.
A motion by Jennifer Ananda, second by Commissioner Bulleye, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Larson, second by Vice Mayor Finkel-Dai, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously.